We'll call the meeting to order for legislative session for Wacomiko County Council, number 2019-20, October 1st, 2019. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Legions, please do.
Father, Hallowed be thy name. All earth, this is my covenant; it will sustain and endure. And give us strength as we must, and give us strength as we must. And in this time of temptation, with the revelation of the gospel of the kingdom, amen, and glory forever. Amen. Pledge of Legions, to the Father, and to the United States of America, to the people of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda in reference to the legislative minutes and open work session minutes as provided.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have a proclamation tonight, it's to recognize students from Wacomiko County who are with the Maryland Youth Advisory Council. Councilman Holloway is going to read a proclamation. We have four proclamations and we have two guests, so if you want to join Joe and whoever you've brought with you can go there as well.
Good evening.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Good. It's always an honor to be able to recognize our students for their involvement in our community, doing the good things they do. And I have four proclamations, one to Grace Ackley, one to Maya Mateva, right? I got it right? Okay. One to Marvin Ly, Lee, and one to Maggie Harkins, but Maggie and Marvin aren't here, so I'll present it to you guys. Okay. And they're both the same, but I'm not going to read them twice. I might need to, if we get it right, but okay. Proclamation, Maryland Youth Advisory Council, Maya Matevly and Grace Ackley. Okay. Whereas the Wacomiko Youth Advisory Council was established in 2008 to ensure that Maryland youth are given the opportunity to provide feedback and recommendations regarding public policies and programs affecting their futures, while also giving them a leadership role in creating meaningful change and whereas the Maryland Youth Advisory Council addresses relevant issues by influencing legislation, spreading public awareness, and serving as a liaison between youth and policymakers and whereas a sophomore at James M. Bennett High School was nominated by the Association of the Local Management Board and appointed by the Governor's Office of Children to serve on the Maryland Youth Advisory Council for the 2019-2020 council year. Therefore, it be resolved that Wacomiko County Council congratulates Maya Matevly and Grace Ackley for being appointed to serve on the Maryland Youth Advisory Council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something? Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say thank you to the council for providing us with this awesome opportunity to come here. I'd also like to thank our parents because they take us to Annapolis once a month. It's a two-hour drive, it's not easy, but yeah, that's, I appreciate you guys and I thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank the council for the honor and I'm looking forward to working on the youth council. Thank you.
By the way, if you see somebody on the council beaming rather brightly, that's Mom sitting over there, Grace's mom, thanks a lot, appreciate it. Here's your words. Will you see, they get these?
You know what, I don't go to the same school as Maya.
We'll take care of it. We'll take care of it. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 127, 2019, to approve a cable franchise agreement between Wacomiko County, Maryland, and Mediacom of Delaware LLC, and to authorize the county executive to execute the agreement. The county council did have a work session on this on September the 17th, and we have Mr. Roscoe Leslie here from the county attorney's office, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 127, 2019. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 127, 2019. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 127, 2019.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good evening, Mr. Taylor, how are you?
Good evening. Two matters on the legislative part of the agenda tonight. The first is a public hearing on legislative bill number 2019-06, an act to amend Chapter 196 of the Wacomiko County Code titled Stormwater Management, to add Article 8 to be entitled "Elicit Discharges" and to renumber the existing Article 8 titled "Miscellaneous Provisions" to become Article 9, and indicate, Mr. Dallas Baker is here tonight for this.
All right. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on legislative bill number 2019-06. Again, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This is a reference to legislative bill 2019-06, Stormwater Management. That concludes the public hearing on legislative bill number 2019-06. Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative bill number 2019-06.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? We'll do, all those in favor, by aye, we'll have to do a roll call vote. We start with Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Ackley.
Aye.
Vice President Dodd.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative bill 2019-06 passes unanimously.
The next matter is for introduction, and it's legislative bill number 2019-07, an act to impose and declare a moratorium on the issuance of building permits for an agricultural storage tank which will store dissolved air flotation in parenthesis DAF, close parenthesis, wash-down water, from a rendering process pursuant to Wacomiko County Code Chapters 225, 125, and 128, and Mr. Paul Wilber is here tonight for that matter. And I would point out that if this bill is introduced tonight, there will be a 30-day period ending November 30 for council to act. During that period, there could be a public hearing on the 5th of November and a work session also on that date, or possibly other dates too, I guess. Could have a work session, for example, on October the 15th. And the council must take action if the bill is introduced tonight by November 30th, or if not, the bill will die unless it is extended by resolution and approval by five members of the council.
Mr. Taylor, for clarification, is it a 30-day period or a 60-day?
Pardon me, I meant to say 60 days, pardon me. 60 days ending November 30th, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Entertained a motion to introduce legislative bill number 2019-07.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to amend this bill for a period of six months.
Okay. Currently, the moratorium is a one-year moratorium. Councilman, Vice President Dodd is making a motion to amend this to six months instead of one year. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Chair's votes in favor, motion is carried to amend it to six months.
Further discussion then on the legislative bill number 2019-07 as amended. Floor's open.
I know we're going to have numerous work sessions and discussions about this, and I will state now that I'm not happy about putting a moratorium on anything, especially anything to do with our farming community, but I do realize the issues that we're having, and the issues neighbors are having, so one of the things, and Paul's in the room, I'd like to see us work on different language for this as far as not being called a moratorium. I think the wording probably sends a negative message to the ag community. I don't know if there is some that we can do, but like I said, when we do move into work sessions, we'll discuss that.
Okay, yeah, we'll have time. And the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a couple of concerns. The, I guess the whole process concerns me a little bit, but I mean, we have not had, as a council body, a session on a moratorium. So, you know, we didn't discuss this language at all. I mean, I do feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, and there is, October 10th, there's a meeting with the stakeholders in the state of Maryland regarding this exact topic. You know, I really wish we were waiting on this, you know, to even introduce this until, at least after that, once we've heard what, you know, the outcomes of that, and, you know, a lot of people are going to have the opportunity to make comments during that, so, yeah, I just feel like, you know, we've gotten ahead of ourselves here introducing this now. I mean, we can always bring it, we can bring it back after this October 10th meeting, and the language could, as Mr. Holloway said, you know, this language might look a lot different at that point, so, you know, I just got concerns about, you know, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Any other comments?
I have concerns with it too, because like I said, we got ahead of ourselves, and like, we got this hearing coming up, and any questions that are out there, I think that all the stakeholders from the state are coming, the ones that are all involved, and that way, we can get all the questions answered and we can get them from them, directly from them, so we know exactly what we're doing and what's going into the tanks, what's being spread on the field, what can be done. They can all explain, instead of us getting different information from different people, we can get it straight from the people that are, you know, putting the things on the guys that are spreading the stuff.
Any other comments? Josh?
Yeah, I'd say this is an issue that, in my mind, needs attention sooner than later and probably should have a while ago. I think, in general, you know, there's a, there's a lot of folks in the community that I grew up with that are rightfully scared as to what, you know, what this could mean. So, I think, at least having a six-month, not a full year, moratorium, it gives us time to then think through, what is the best policy? If things, if anything, maybe, you know, I might have some issues with the way that it's actually written, that maybe could, could go further. I don't know if it fully, fully grabs all of what this is, not just a DAF tank, but, but that being said, as it is, I'm actually, I'm okay with that, is for six months.
Any other comments?
Yes, this room is almost filled with people that live in the area, neighbors, and we've seen them here many times, we've received many phone calls, I was on the phone this afternoon to several people. This is just a temporary moratorium because we don't want another one of these million-gallon tanks to pop up in somebody else's neighborhood and then get a new group of people coming in here complaining. So, it's just temporary, and nothing against anybody, we just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Any other comments?
I know some council members don't want to hear this, but we're not tied to just that amount of meetings when we have our regular, regular twice monthly meetings. If, if the need be, we could have another meeting sometime, we could call another meeting, stakeholders meeting, just for this, just for this issue.
Right. Bill? And the, and the meeting, I understand, I recognize the meeting that's being held by the state of Maryland next week, late next week. The meeting, as I understand it, is probably mostly in reference to educating the public on the odor and the application process, and what concerns have been expressed by the public in reference to that, not just with this tank, but in agriculture as a whole. This particular moratorium is focusing more on zoning issues, focusing more on storage tank issues. It has nothing to do with the odor, it has nothing to do with the application, so we just want to make that clear, that that's, that's what this is in regard to, so. And whatever benefit we might get from the meeting next week, certainly, yes, we could include that in whatever discussions we have during our, our future work sessions and council meetings.
John, I would suggest, I think our next council meeting's on the 15th, that we make sure planning, zoning people here to fill us in on legality or what they think of it.
Okay. Sounds good.
And initially, I would, I would have, I would like to see the one year, but I understand the rationale of the six months, and so that's appropriate to gather information.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2019-07, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's passed, legislative, the introduction of legislative bill number 2019-07 has been approved.
That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good evening, Mr. Hitchens, how are you?
Good evening. How are you, Governor President?
Doing well, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is annual hotline update. I just have a quick memo. The county renewed its agreement with Navex to provide hotline services for the period of April 1st, 2019, to March 31st, 2020. The hotline allows citizens and employees to report a variety of incidents. The hotline is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It allows callers to remain anonymous if they wish. Calls result in the generation of a report that is forwarded to the Office of the Internal Auditor for review. The internal auditor appoints a team to address the complaint. Personnel matters do not generate reports, and the caller is referred to the Human Resources Department via the hotline representative, and the call is dismissed in that case. During the past fiscal year, the hotline received two incident reports. One was categorized as customer relations and the other was fraud. Since the introduction of the hotline in February 20, 2009, we've received 51 reports. And that's all I have.
Any other questions for, Mr. Hitchens? Levin, the question I had in, in the body of the text, it refers to the internal auditor appoints a team. Could you sort of expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Typically, in the past, few complaints we've received since I've been here, we try to get a team of three people if appropriate. Typically, it's the internal auditor, myself, and many times Laura Hurley, or Bob Taylor, depending on the situation. That way, we have kind of a fair and balanced team that allows us to go through the complaint and make sure it's handled without bias.
And I don't know, but I'm wondering, is, if in this evaluation, when you refer to the team, in a lot of instances, we know that employees especially are very concerned about where their information might go, and even though we try to assure them that it's anonymous, and it is very much anonymous, they might be concerned about what, who the team might be, and what, you know, possible ramifications could occur. Is there any way to clarify, more clearly clarify, the definition of the team in what you've presented to us?
Well, typically, well, within, if a complaint is coming from an employee, we're not going to include anyone on the team that is in their direct supervision.
Okay.
We would, you know, we would have to use our judgment on each case. I'm not sure how to clarify it much more than that, but typically, the team remains within the legislative branch versus, unless it's like a customer relations, and many times that is passed on to the department head, so they can address the customer issue.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion or questions?
So, if there would be an auditing concern within the council, how would that be handled?
With one of the council people?
Yeah.
The internal auditors would still handle the complaint?
Okay.
Any other questions? This is not requiring a vote or an approval or anything, that's just an update. It's an update, okay. All right, Mr. Hitchens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for our public comments. If anyone has any public comments, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. This is open to anything, any, any topic at all. Good evening.
Good evening, council, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joan Smith, President of Wacomiko County Education Association, and I have some concerns that council is moving forward without community consideration in the matter of the nominating commission. In 26, in the 2016 referendum, Wacomiko County voters chose to change our appointed school board to an elected school board. The 2016 Maryland Senate Bill 145 was signed into law by our governor, the Honorable Larry Hogan. Detailed within Maryland Senate Bill 145 is a section of the text subtitle 13A, Wacomiko County, 3-13A-01 through 3-13A-06, explaining by whom and how, or the process, vacancies on the Board of Education are filled. A group of 14 people selected by the people of Wacomiko County per Governor Hogan's signature, appointed, and I'm quoting the bill now, appointed by the county executive of Wacomiko County, subject to confirmation by the county council, from the names submitted by the following organizations, entities, or communities of interest. One member from the Wacomiko County branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. One member from the Wacomiko Education Association. One member from the Wacomiko County Area Chambers of Commerce selected by the chambers by consensus. One member from the Wacomiko County Educational Support Professionals Association. One member from the Wacomiko County Council of PTAs. One member from each of the eight incorporated municipalities in Wacomiko County, and one member who is a parent of a child with special needs in the Wacomiko County Public School System, and who is affiliated with an advocacy group for children with special needs in the county. To the extent practicable, the commission shall reflect the gender, ethnic, and racial makeup of the county. The county executive of Wacomiko County shall appoint the members of the commission with the advice and consent of the county council, from the names submitted by the organizations, entities, or communities of interest listed under paragraph 5 of this subsection. The term of a member of the commission is four years. This group of 14, the nominating commission, represents our community, the community that voted for an elected school board. Eliminating the nominating commission is unacceptable. The commission has twice acted according to State Bill 145, as authorized, signed by Governor Hogan. The task of the commission is stated in the bill, and the nominating commission has acted accordingly. If there are concerns, the concerns need to be voiced and the challenges overcome. Removing the nominating commission robs the people of Wacomiko County of their voice in our public schools that they fought so hard to get through electing the school board. President Cannon, I listened to, and this is what brought me out this evening, canceling a couple of other meetings, but I listened to you speak during the September 3rd and September 17th meetings, and I did hear you voice concerns about difficulty in achieving a quorum, and yet, no mention of that was made until the end of the second time we acted. If there is an issue, it needs to be brought to the attention of the group so that that issue can be resolved. I think that's only fair to all concerned. I also heard it mentioned prior to that, that there were concerns about information getting out to the community in a timely fashion. I presented you, when you let us know that concern at the end of the second process, I presented you with a list of the various press releases that I personally sent out to WMBT, who did respond and did a brief soundbite about the process and about the people who had been nominated and their public hearing. I did send to the newspapers, it was printed in Delmarver Now and by The Independent, the process, the dates, our timeline that had been set, and when all applications need to be received. I'm not sure what other issues may have with the nominating commission, but I feel that we worked within the law that had been presented to us with process and with due diligence. I hope that you will reconsider taking action to do away with the nominating commission, and instead, if there are issues and problems, I hope that you will bring the group together and help to resolve those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
My name is Mary Ashanti, I'm President of Wacomiko County NAACP, and I guess I'm a little bit disappointed about the whole process. First of all, we never wanted a nominated, a nominated board, but this is what we have. I'm referencing the nominating commission. If there's a problem, I do agree with Ms. Smith that we need to have a work session to resolve it, and there is a problem, because everyone that was supposed to be involved in the nominating commission was not involved in the nominating commission. So, one of the things that we in the African-American community were concerned about is that we would not be represented in the process and not be properly represented on the Board of Education. We have not been properly represented in the process, either with the nominating commission or with this council. So, we are hoping that before too many changes are made, that this commission be brought before the council and have a discussion on the process and how it should go. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shonik. Any other public comments?
Bob, excuse me, Bob Van Meter, 9438 Athol Road, Mordella Springs, Maryland. Council President Cannon, members of the council, good evening. I want to make it clear, I'm pro-farmer, pro-landowner, and have a disdain for overregulation of any type. However, sometimes there's a need to back up and reassess what we're doing and why. I applaud the introduction, and I support the council members that, for the introducing the temporary moratorium on the tanks that were discussed earlier. The processing of chickens is a very important industry on Delmarver, one I, and most of us in this room, embrace and support. That doesn't mean I have to agree with them on every aspect or every issue. As zoning exists tonight, as I understand it, there is nothing that would prohibit the placement of one of these tanks and pumping facilities directly across the road from the Sharp Town Farm in Carnival, or that would prohibit any farm property owner with property that's contiguous or near the Pirates Wharf Park site we're getting ready to spend a great deal of money on, from erecting such a facility. Now, that would be, be nice, wouldn't it, to have something like that, and the odor from that permeating through that park. I am reducing my remarks, as I, I think we should wait till the, to the public hearings start. I suggest that the current zoning regulations used by the county that defines a 3-million-gallon industrial waste tank as a barn simply because it's, it's being constructed on a farm or field is severely flawed. I also emphasize there's a difference between a grain storage tank and one of these waste tanks. Definitions are very important in law and in zoning. Definitions are very important in law and in zoning. We should give planning and zoning the tools, definitions, regulations they need to make appropriate determinations. I suggest also that there's a need to look at this from another angle, and that's the revenue income tax, a property tax that comes into the county. I suggest that there's going to be a loss from the depreciated value of homes surrounded by a tank site of the nature that's been discussed tonight versus increase in any property tax levied on the tank farm. The county may end up inadvertently not even recognizing that they're subsidizing these tanks, and I think that's something we need to look at strictly from a mass issue. What will happen? Because if I'm one of those homeowners, I'm going to ask for reassessment, and I think it would be justified. I believe the property value, the person in close proximity going to these tanks, the property that has its value today is going to be much less as for a tank is put in front of it. So, I support the concept of the moratorium on waste storage facilities of this nature until the issues surrounding the type of operations are examined. Common sense zoning regulations are equitable to all parties are established. I also suggest that the citizens from around the county participate in this process to the fullest, and I thank each of you for the introduction of this legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Van Meter. Any other public comments?
TJ Momford, 26632 Porter Mill Road, Heveron. I support the temporary moratorium. I'd also say it's nice to be heard and see action taken, so thank you for all your efforts in doing that. I would also encourage those who want to look at the regulations to research Marshall County, Alabama. Apparently, they've confronted the same situation. There's several articles on the Internet that talks about what things they've done to try to resolve the issue. Again, thank you for your action.
Thank you, Ms. Momford. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments. Josh?
Yeah, I'll pop in and say regarding the, oh, I'll just say last night, actually, I was, till late last night, I was in Queen Anne's County with a couple of folks that are in the room regarding the Maryland Department of Agriculture's listening sessions and kind of their, I guess, impending comprehensive, or impending strategic planning, but this was a great process to be involved with where we could think about how agriculture exists in Maryland and what are its weaknesses or threats or other kind of opportunities. I bring that up because, just like Mr. Van Meter, who mentioned, you know, I grew up in Athol, it's a community that, by the way, is families, some legendary wonderful people. But we, there's a lot of folks, I'm a proud supporter of agriculture, and I think a lot of folks that are there are also, but we do need to have some sort of common ground where we don't have regulations that are, where we don't have, we don't leave our regulations open up that anyone in any operation could be impacted, and the truth is, a lot of the farm families, like the one I come from, are very sensitive to the feeling like they're often the ones causing the problems, whereas it could just be because of poor regulations or a few bad actors. So, I'm happy to see the moratorium, see us moving forward with that. Last thing I'll say is, I got married this, about a week and a half ago, and thanks to everyone in the community's support, and to my partner, Alyssa Massey, for being such a wonderful person.
Congratulations.
That's so sweet. That's so sweet.
Any other comments?
I would just, I would like to thank the council for moving forward on the moratorium. I see this as a time to gather more information, learn more about what this product is, and having more communication with the stakeholders and the community to come together for a common ground. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to note that I didn't get married this last weekend. I'm going to get married next weekend, but congratulations, Josh. I do thank everyone from the District 2 area around this sludge tank that has been calling me. Once you get elected, you represent everybody, not just your district, not just District 3. So, everybody that is concerned, thank you. I have an open ear, and that's what I'm doing the job for. And like Councilman Halloway said, we're not against the farmers, we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing, and we don't want to upset neighborhoods for issuing permits to build something that shouldn't be built. I do plan on attending any upcoming hearings because we do need to be educated better on this. And as far as the school board nominating committee, thank you, Ms. Smith, for speaking. Ms. Ashanti, thank you. I think you all made a good point. I would like to hear from everyone that is on the commission. Hopefully, the ones that hadn't been showing up, maybe they'll show up and discuss why we should keep it, and I don't think the point was to dissolve the committee. I think maybe just to get more cohesive, because it's the first time, and try to work out the bugs, so I don't think anybody really wants to do away with it, but thank you for your concern.
No, Bill?
Yeah, just one quick comment on a different topic. This weekend is one of the biggest events we have in Wycomico County, it's the Seagull Century, so, you know, there's going to be several thousand bikers on the road, so be safe, and I'll be one of those riders out there, so don't run over me, but it's a big event for the county, so.
And I have spandex.
Yeah, I have my spandex on out there.
I hope you behave better than they did in Ocean City last weekend.
ACO drivers.
Go ahead, Aaron.
As far as the tanks concerned, you can see I voted against the moratorium because I've talked to several people, and unfortunately, that Mr. Burns' tank that's going to affect most of you people, it's almost going to go up, pretty much, but as far as any more going up in the county, I don't foresee that because the two people that are doing it in the county, there's only two people that are pumping this stuff in the county on land, and it's only one company that's supplying it. As you see, Mr. Burns is trying to put up a tank, and as far as the other one, he's getting his out of, matter of fact, there's a tank in another county where he's getting his. So, as far as someone else trying to put up another tank, I don't foresee that because they're the only two that are pretty much authorized to do it in the county. So, I can see your concerns about more tanks going up, but I don't foresee any more, but again, you got the moratorium, so, and then on the 10th, we can get some more answers from the people from the state.
Thank you, Aaron.
I'd like to introduce a guest tonight, Bethany Miller. She serves on the Pittsville Town Council, and she's running for reelection, the next election, and she's representing Pittsville very well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sitting right there, anything?
Thanks for being here. Under Presidential comments, I would like to address Mrs. Smith and President Ashanti. We had an open work session, a public work session, to discuss the commission, and we did have Mr. Brumley here, who is the Chair of the Commission, so we were getting input from the commission. Needless not to say that we, you know, in future work sessions, of course, anyone is invited to attend and to participate, we welcome that. We did not go down this road because we had any problem with what the commission did. The commission did an excellent job. We went down this road because we felt there were inherent difficulties that were in the process that actually made your jobs more difficult. So, we were trying to find ways that we could alleviate those concerns. In the process, Mr. Taylor did a lot of research, and in that process, we recognized the fact that there may be, what, only two counties in the state of Maryland?
Four.
Four counties in the state of Maryland that have continued on with the commission process. So, that's why the discussion turned sort of to the question of, well, do we want to commission at all? In those counties, for the most part, the council made that decision. Personally, I'd rather have a commission make that decision and then bring it to the council, but that's part of what will be discussed in future work sessions, and you will certainly be made aware of every work session that we'll hold, we'll make sure that letters go out so that you are personally notified of that. But what was brought to our attention was the fact, as was discussed earlier, there's 14 members, and they had a hard time getting a quorum. If they don't get a quorum, they don't have a meeting, and if they can't have a meeting, that deadline, we found out that we created, was so tight, it was making it very hard for us to successfully accomplish what needed to be done. I would conclude by just saying that that was really what we were trying to get at. A suggestion by Mr. Brumley was, instead of the 14, because we felt the 14 was, people were beating the bush to try to come up with these people, and as a result, when it came time to actually show up, a lot of the people said, all right, yeah, I'll be on it, I'll be on it, they really didn't want to come, however that might be. And we can certainly go through the entire process of trying to appoint 14 more, you know, getting rid of seven or six, however, and getting more back. Just arbitrarily, Mr. Brumley had said, well, you know, the council could consider having five or seven members, which would be similar to what the council does, where you have one from each district and two at large. That could be possibly considered as a representative of the community, simply as an option. So, that's where we are in the process. It was just one work session, and as I said before, we'll have more. It was never a reflection on the way that it was handled. We just thought that we might be able to help improve the way, the responsibilities that you'll have in the future.
When the nominating committee, or commission or whatever, needs to improve how it works, it won't get to the point of acting to, or to choose a nominee, it has, it needs to work to become a cohesive body before it has to address that.
Understood. Part of that issue also is the fact that we felt that the public hearing, the requirements for public hearing were very onerous, and as was your responsibility, you held the public hearings, but in effect, it was brilliant, just an open forum of questions and answers between the commission and the applicants. There wasn't a lot of public input that was required, and we felt that maybe that also could be reduced as well, just some small things that might tweak it. Again, the idea of eliminating it was, came back, came back, came out sort of accidentally, and we would simply, we would still review that again, but we would want your input as well.
And for what it's worth, Mr. Cannon and I had a discussion, and I did mention making sure that Ms. Ashanti, Ms. Smith were representatives of our future discussions.
That's everything I have for Presidential comments. Entertaining a motion to adjourn so we can go into open work sessions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the Water and Sewer Plan Amendment for Penn Tech Ventures.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county.
Just one second. I thought they were here to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. So, this is an amendment to modify the county's water and sewer plan. It will provide an extension of water and sewer mains to the north of the Aldi site on Route 13 for two new restaurants that have been, that whole property up there has been annexed into the city. The city's reviewed their application, they have capacity, and they are in agreement to provide those locations with water and sewers. This is the, you know, the first step in the process, and we'll approve it, you know, in theory, we'll go through the approval process on our end, and then send it up to the Department of the Environment for formal approval by MDE and MDP.
So, the property goes to the water line?
Yes.
There'll be a restaurant on that river?
Yeah, I believe they're proposing two, two right there.
Okay. I knew that building was vacant.
Any questions for council?
That will look to hear, we'll look forward to hearing back on that.
Yep, I believe after you go to a public hearing.
Public hearing, and we can have that on November the 5th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, great.
See you back in November.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dallas.
Next item on the agenda is the Forest Conservation Relocation at 6441 Rock Walkin' Road, Mr. Ross. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tyler Walsh, I'm the Environmental Planner for the county. And what we have in front of you this evening is an easement relocation request for Brock and.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry.
Could you ask them to maybe go a little further out? Thank you.
We've got an easement relocation request for Brock and Jennifer Parker on 6441 Rock Walkin' Road. Size of property is 1.94 acres. The applicant is requesting permission to relocate the forest conservation easement that is located on the property. Currently, the site has an area of .53 acres in FCA easement. The applicant requests that .04 acres of the easement be moved to expand the sewage reserve area. The owner has requested a portion of the existing FCA easement be relocated. Since the relocation is proposed to occur onsite, the owner may relocate the easement at a one-to-one ratio. Because this is occurring onsite, and there's room to do it onsite, planning and zoning staff is recommending that council approves this easement relocation.
Questions from council?
I have a few questions. So, their septic system has failed, or they're looking to expand their property?
They're looking to expand the sewage reserve area. I believe they have a family member who is in failing health, and they previously went to the Board of Appeals to get a, I think, an in-law apartment, and this is associated with that.
Okay, and they can't, I mean, I've just driven by the property, and there's quite a bit of land in front of the property. They can't do a bat system in front of the property without disturbing forest protection?
I'm not as familiar with, the Health Department handles septic issues, so I can't really speak on that. So, they asked for an easement relocation, and that's sort of where we are on that.
And is that typical that the county weighs in on forest conservation?
Yes. So, the way it's set up, the county owns the easement as part of the Forest Conservation Act, so in the past, we've had these easement relocation requests where the council will vote on whether or not to relocate the easement.
Yeah, we've moved these around before.
Yeah, it's maybe two or three times a year.
Okay. My understanding, it was a state, it was something, a state forest?
Yeah, it's a state program that's administered on the county level.
Okay. And they've exhausted all of their options?
I'm sorry?
They exhausted all of their options, but?
I'm not sure as to what the requirements were for the sewage reserve area. They may have some soil limitations that may have come into play there, but I'm not aware of any of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Where will we go from here?
It does require a public hearing, we'll have that on November the 5th as well, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is lobbyists for Wycomico County. I think we have Mr. Culver here and Mr. Strausberg in the audience. Excuse me?
Mr. Ellington.
And Weston, who's the guy? Come on forward.
Good evening, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Okay, Weston. Wanted to have the work session today because we were sort of, council was very surprised last Saturday, I believe it was, when it was announced by a gentleman that Wycomico County had a lobbyist. Mr. Ellington stood up in a meeting that we were having with Eastern Shore delegation and announced, to pretty much everyone's surprise, including the Eastern Shore delegation, that Wycomico County now had a lobbyist. So, we were inviting the executive, and Wayne, and yourself to the table to sort of give us an exact idea of what Wycomico County, with the council, and what the citizens of Wycomico County could expect, what is found to be the benefit of this, what the costs were, and exactly what maybe caused this to come about.
Sure, sure. You all should be in a receipt of a letter the executive sent earlier today, so I'm going to hit some of those points, and for the citizens at home. So, we have a series of state and federal So, we have a series of state and federal initiatives that we are interested in pursuing, and we felt the help of a professional lobbyist in Annapolis area could assist us with that. As far as nearby examples, Ocean City and Queen Anne's County utilize lobbyists, and they pay over twice what we're paying. We're paying what is the equivalent of $30,000 for a year of work for us. Some of those projects, we have a variety of projects. We have Mr. Ellington, and that's with a company called State and Local Advisors. We have an airport maintenance tax bill that has failed in the previous two sessions, if not three. What we're trying to do is to be more strategic in the endeavor to get it passed. It is a jobs creation bill, and it keeps getting killed in the House. The Senate passes it, and we're trying a more concerted effort under the experience of Mr. Ellington, and that's what we are pursuing there. As you know, each year with the Maryland Department of Transportation, we have a priority wish list in the Consolidated Transportation Program, also known as CTP. Historically, once we send this letter and give a presentation to the Maryland Department of Transportation, there's a little follow-up, namely during the state budget process when these projects are being discussed. So, we're looking for additional follow-up with the CTP. We're also attempting to get a Maryland Port Administration budget line item to either help with the dredging of the Wycomica River, or funding the administration of the Delmarva Water Transport Committee. In that same theme, we're looking for state and federal grant support. For example, in our first meeting with Mr. Ellington, he asked us what we've asked for in the past for bond bills. That silence is basically what we had when he asked us that, and not to speak for Wayne, but in his eight years, he's never been approached about bond bills. We didn't know about bond bills, what they were. That is a funding source that can be submitted by our delegation, and we can use it for a variety of projects. He then asked about the governor's discretionary funds. These are funds that the governor can put towards projects. I think the amphitheater and Main Street for the city have been funded through these sources. The point is, there's funding at, and this is just the state level, that we are not going after, and with his guidance and his connections, we feel, you know, I mean, it's clear that for what we're paying, if he even gets one of our projects funded, he's more than paid for himself. Lastly, we're pursuing improved communications and connections with key state executive and legislative level contacts. So, basically, improved government relations, a seat at the table, someone who's there representing the county and the county's interests, because we can't be in Annapolis every day. And we see value in that. So, that's basically just where we are getting started from when the contract began.
How did the city find out about the funding for the amphitheater?
That I don't know.
Do they have a lobbyist?
I'm not certain.
Do they have a grant writer?
I believe they have a grant writer. We do not currently have a grant writer.
That's something that I'd rather say is invest money in, is a grant writer.
Have we asked Delegate Sample Hughes to lead on the bills, given that she's now the number two person in the House? She would be far, far, far more effective than a random person who I've never heard of, maybe I've heard of once, but he's not a, he's not a part of any other major lobbying groups.
The random person submitting the bill has been our lower shore delegation.
This comes as a delegation bill that's passed or not?
Yeah, it's been submitted in both houses. The Senate passes it each time. The House is being, it's not passing.
So, our lead House sponsor is not, probably not the most effective?
Correct.
Yeah, that's why we need him.
We are, we are working with Delegate Sample Hughes, and we're hoping for her support for this project. But that, again, that is, that is just one bill that we are, we're going forward with.
And you're assuming that you'll have success with this, but you could have, you could equally have...
We could still hit the same...
No difference whatsoever.
We could hit the same roadblocks if the people, I mean, we need to face that rural areas are outnumbered, especially in the House. So, we need to convince...
We recognize that, everybody recognizes that. Yeah, we have five delegates that recognize that, we have two senators that recognize that, but they work every day to try to achieve that goal. I think they were as equally surprised as we were when we found out that this was, this was, this was, I wouldn't say budgeted, because it wasn't budgeted. It's just $30,000 that was spent because money was left over, I assume. I'm not quite sure. Where did the $30,000 come from?
The $30,000 came from the executive's budget. As you are aware, for this fiscal year, council drastically cut the executive's budget, and it would have been funded out of this fiscal year on a monthly basis. But given we have the priorities that we have, we funded it out of the FY19 leftovers, basically, everything we could...
Well, in the budget, you say we cut it, or it would have been, it would have been spent out of the executive's budget, but we cut it. There was nothing in the executive's budget for a lobbyist last year. There was no, there was nothing for a lobbyist. We haven't seen that.
Well, the part, the line item that was cut from the executive budget is used for a variety of things that pop up. In this case, we would have viewed the use of a lobbyist to, again, accomplish what we're trying to do at the state and federal level.
Where did this funding come from? The $30,000?
The executive's...
Understand, what area?
I don't have that in front of me. I can pull that.
I don't think it could have come from salaries, right?
No, it wouldn't have come from salaries. It would have been one-time contractual services, one of those line items.
So, if we approved one-time contractual services, I don't think that we would have budgeted, or at least we would have tried to have been careful enough to have budgeted as to what was needed. So, I'm still curious, I think we're still curious as to where $30,000 came from.
I can get you that answer.
And what really surprised me, if $30,000 came, you know, all of a sudden came out, I mean, it could, it could, I would expect that somehow or other, with that amount of money, that it might involve a concerted effort as to how to maybe spend it, instead of saying, well, maybe it's here, let's just do this. Because, you know, Councilwoman Atlee had talked about a grant writer, something to that effect. I know the council has been trying to get some type of a grant writer budgeted, or at least a proposal for a grant writer, someone that could brand and market the county, and at the same time, look into writing grants. I mean, these are, these are items that have been discussed before in prior, prior work sessions and in prior budget sessions. So, I think, you know, even, even something along that line might have been a more, a little bit more easier to swallow than, here we go, we have a lobbyist.
Sure. So, I think in terms of branding and marketing, the county, we would be talking a PIO position.
Not necessarily.
It depends on how you define a PIO position. A PIO position does not nearly have that, not necessarily have that job description.
I just don't think a grant writer would.
So, Weston, just working with different nonprofits, how they typically will have a grant writer, but then they also have a working board, and none of us here are full time. So, when you have a grant writer, plus you're trying to make that connection with the government's officials, the stakeholders that are making those decisions, are you saying that's kind of where the laps would be? I mean, that's where I see the laps to be, that there's not, if we had a grant writer, we still don't have a full-time council to make those legislative connections.
So, the way we handle grants now is each department, division is on their own.
Wow.
So, for example, the flooding or water quality improvements, Dallas and its staff at Public Works are applying for it. If it's program, open space, and state money there, it is Rec and Parks applying for it. The, a grant writer can help with the budgeting and the paperwork that's required, but typically, you still need those subject matter experts in each department. Again, a grant writer would not be helping us with the airport maintenance tax bill, which we feel is critical for development out at the airport. Our CTP letter with the state, maybe they could help improve our letter, but again, that's pulled together by Public Works. Requesting the governor's office and the Maryland Port Administration to include a budget line item, that's not really a grant writer. I think it could help out with the local management board in pretty much every department that there's grant funding for. You know, we are not opposed to a grant writer.
So, maybe like a legislative liaison? I'm trying to look for a solution in the long term, because this is obviously a need that we have, a grant writer and a legislative liaison. So, moving forward, how can we, is that what you're saying would work, those two working together?
Yeah, I think in terms of the legislative liaison, we're leaning on Mr. Ellington at the moment to fill that gap.
Okay.
Okay, so he's a lobbyist. He goes to Annapolis, and he's lobbying to get the grant funding, the funding, and like you said, the bond bill, and like for the airport. He's still going to have to rely on the delegation to introduce this stuff.
Sure, and we plan to continue working with the delegation, so we're not bypassing the lower, lower shore delegation.
Well, we discussed that one about the airport, and it was brought up in the meeting with, that Mr. Culver had, and as one person on the Senate said, it always passes Senate. This passed Senate three years in a row. But when it gets to the House, he's doing the same thing over and over. He's not changing the mindset, and he's using the same tactic. I think if we keep using the same tactics, we'll keep failing, and he's not understanding that. And we understand that the delegation is what? We have one Democrat and, Weston, a Republican, and not, nothing against that, but when they realize they go across the bay, the odds change. And if you don't address yourself and change towards their thinking, and they keep thinking as, the way they're thinking now, that, you know, yeah, we're almighty powerful from the shore, but when you get up there, you're nothing, and you don't change your mindset, I don't think the lobbyist is going to do it. He's going to do his job, probably, but if we don't change the mindset of our delegation, we're still going to be nowhere.
You're 100% correct in terms of if we don't change the strategy. We've submitted it the same way several years in a row, and we do need to learn from, you know, the previous failures, and that's what we're using Mr. Ellington for.
To change the mindset of the delegation.
Now, again, it may not, it may not pass, but...
I mean, he could do his work as far as getting that money, I mean, get the people there, but until we change the mindset of our delegation, that, hey, you guys are going to have to work with those people on the other side of the shore, if not, we're going to still get nothing.
And we can encourage our delegation to do that. Again, they don't report to us, although they serve us, and we're not saying they're not working for us.
They don't report to us, but they represent us, and we put them in office, and until they start realizing that they were elected of the people of Wycomica County, whether they're Republican or Democrat, if they don't change the mindset they're thinking, we're going to still be doing the same thing for the next three years.
To be successful, we need to be strategic, and this is why we're leaning on somebody who has 30-plus years' experience in this world. We think it's compared to what other people are paying for lobbyists, we think it's a good price, and, you know, we've been happy with the work we've given to Mr. Ellington.
That's true, but he's going to have to change the set of those delegations to get things going, to get it, make his job successful. He's going to have to change their mindset, or he's going to be looking like we are for the past years.
Agreed.
Joe?
You just said 30 years of experience. The experience I've read about Mr. Ellington is he was a campaign manager, not necessarily a lobbyist.
So, that's 30 years of connections. That's knowing the people in the various roles, knows their deputies, knows, you know, their key staff.
That's not being a lobbyist, that's...
Oh, totally, totally, but a lobbyist is a lot about networking, introducing people, and having those connections.
We've seen, you said you paid him $30,000.
Correct.
And you paid that upfront. In other words, he got a lump sum upfront before services were rendered, right?
Correct.
Is that the normal thing that the county does?
It varies depending on deliverables. In this case, given our budget had been cut, we paid for it upfront, because we wouldn't have been able to afford it, what we need, what we feel we need in fiscal year '20. So, we paid with FY19.
You know, I often hear about government and budgets, and people saying, you know, I mean, whether it's the school systems or any department says, oh, we got this money left over, we better spend it. So, it's, you know, we've heard that, how many times have we heard that over the years?
We think there will be a good return on investment in this.
But we don't know. If we paid him $2,500 a month, we could, we could have, we could have gauged that, right?
And if we didn't have our budget cut, yes.
How can we measure his success?
No, your budget had nothing to do with it. Your budget cut had nothing to do with that.
We would have used that money, too.
That job wasn't even being considered.
You don't know that.
I would have, well, then we should have known.
Because if you look at when the contract was signed, it was in the previous fiscal year.
Well, we should have known, and that's, that's the discussion here. We didn't know it. The public didn't know it. Nobody knew it, until this gentleman stood up and explained to a room of county council members and Eastern Shore delegates that he was all of a sudden the lobbyist for Wycomica County. So, we didn't know it, and we should have known it. If it was this important to spend $30,000 of taxpayers' money, it should have been in the budget. If there's any type of planning involved, it should have been in the budget.
I'll go ahead.
No, I'd like to say, you know, let's face it, communication's been an all-time low between these two branches of government.
No, communication's been low coming out of the executive branch, and we know that. The executive's in the back of the room, you want to sit at the table, you're welcome to sit at the table, we invite you all the time. You're sitting in the back of the room, if you want to come to the table, be glad to. But we have an issue where all we're trying to do is that if something's going to be done, something is that important, why don't you inform the public, why don't you inform the council what's being done? That's why this elected body is here.
You didn't inform us when you decided to have an eternal auditor, an assistant eternal auditor. This is within the purview of the executive office, John.
The internal auditor was, is, am I not mistaken, is that not in the charter?
But you didn't say that we need a...
It's a legislative bill, it was a legislative bill that was introduced.
Yeah, it was a legislative bill. It went to the public, it had public hearings.
This is within our purview to do as far as contractual services.
What part did you not understand about the internal auditor?
I understand it perfectly well. On what part of this don't you understand about a lot of this stuff, John? This is within our purview, you know?
So, I'm sorry, Senator, but do we have, do we have ways that we can measure his success? What he's doing?
Sure, I mean, we...
Ways to measure it, things, can you update us every three months? Can you...
We can give updates on where we are on the progress of all of these things.
Joe made a very good point. You've bought a guy for one year.
He don't want to do anything.
In three months, if nothing happens, this, this county has already paid, these taxpayers are already out $30,000.
Again, we think the return on investment, and we should be able to show that, however you want to see it. But again, if we get one project funded through a bond bill, you know, we're asking money for the bookmobile, we're asking money for Henry Parker's Field 7.5, we're asking for improvements to corrections and the county-owned building that houses the extension office. If we get any of those funded, it's more than paid for, $30,000, which again, is out of over a $150 million budget.
Weston, we've been getting things funded for years. I understand what you're saying, but it's not like we're sitting here in this county without receiving any funds from the state or so-called federal government. I don't see that. You know, we've been getting funds, you know, we get funds all the time. Sure, we could use a grant writer, it might help. You know, my issues, I have several issues with this, and I'm going to get into one of the big ones here in a minute. But, you know, for us to be told at that meeting, for that gentleman to stand up and explain to us that he's our new lobbyist, why wasn't it asked to be put on our council agenda when you hired him and said, you know, we've hired a lobbyist? We probably wouldn't have liked it then, but it had been a lot less of an impact than it was at this legislative meeting, when you're starting to get calls from your legislators and said, what's going on at this meeting? You know, I had a phone call like that. You know, what, what's going on? I said, hey, we don't know. Let me ask another question.
Was your phone call before last week's Saturday?
No, it was after.
After that?
Yeah, it was after. I mean, they said, I'm shocked. I said, not any more than we are. Okay. Ms., Poplar Hill, okay, we didn't approve the funding in March. You hired this gentleman in April, correct?
I think it went from June to June, or May to May.
Okay, contract signed, okay, whatever. But anyway, I seen here where you said it wouldn't have been a conflict of interest because we didn't approve the funding. We tabled it. But Poplar Hill was still being lobbied at Mako.
Sure.
Okay, very heavily. Now, this was in August, Mr. Ellington? Now, this was in that August. Mr. Ellington came up to me and he asked me, I'd had a conversation with our state senators. He says, they want me to introduce you to somebody. He took me over to this Kevin Dorance from, um, Transform Care. This is in August. Mr. Ellington never introduced himself as our lobbyist. He never introduced, and I'd seen him in passing at different times. He didn't say he was our lobbyist. Why wouldn't he say, hey, I'm your new lobbyist and I want to introduce you to Kevin Dorance? The other thing that's troubling, as we know Transform, in fact, when I talked to the gentleman that day from Transform Care, they were ready to move in. I mean, this guy's telling me, oh yeah, this is gonna be a great thing. We're gonna be moving in, we're gonna grow tomatoes and we've got a blueberry farm in Texas and come to find out, Mr. Ellington has a lobbying firm, correct?
Yeah, state, state and local advisors, yes.
A fellow named Randall Nash, who is a partner in that firm, rep- represents Transform Care. I mean, don't you see that as a conflict?
So, if I may, Pop- Poplar Hill is a state facility and, and we remain supportive of repurposing the site into a regional treatment facility. We are not actively working on anything that involves county involvement with that facility. It is a state facility. As I mentioned earlier.
Your lobby, what Joe is trying to say is your lobbyist was lobbying for that.
I think he was introducing, eh, which what they do, they make connections. If he was asked by Senator Mary Beth Carosa to introduce you to somebody, he's gonna do it. He makes connections. We have, what they are is an interested service provider that would like to go in that building and open up a treatment facility. We have no role in that.
Weston, you were talking about the Wycomico County lobbyist who nobody knows exists lobbying one of our county council members.
Never introduced himself, Weston, you know. You, I know you're having a tough time defending this and that, that's fine.
And really, we could direct it at Bob, not you. We could direct it at you, Bob. I mean, that's, that's a circumstance.
As I told you, you asked me about that, sitting right there and talking to Nicole, you all were on the bench and you asked me, who was this guy? And I said, Transform Care would be the, the one that we were looking at taking over Poplar Hill. And why? Okay, well, why, why is he? I told you, I'm trying to go around the council and the fact of letting the state work directly with the, with the provider and get the county out of it altogether. Is that not exactly what I told you?
No, I don't remember that. I may have quite a done. I'm not, I'm not.
Did you tell Joe at the time that this guy was our lobbyist?
No, I did not.
That's unusual.
I, I don't think, I mean, I was there for that conversation. I don't think Paul Ellington actually came up in that moment.
No, no, at that point, John, it was not.
We were talking about Transform Care.
But anyhow, yeah, that's, so that was the point. Uh, yeah, we hired him because we have got several things we've got to get through, okay? And as, just as, um, Ernie said, it's not working right. We did not submit that bill or tell the delegate to submit that bill on behalf of Wycomico County this year. Paul is the one that suggested we get Cherie to help us go through with that. So, I mean, that was a good point that we brought, was brought out to us. So, um, and Cherie, as you know, asked, asked several good questions the other day. So, that was the point. So, you know, with his expertise, he has 30 years, as Weston said, of knowing these people. He can open doors that we can't open, get us into.
Why would we need a county lobbyist to tell us to use one of our Eastern Shore delegation? I mean, he's telling, you say it's a good, he made a good point.
He knows the workings, he knows the workings of.
Well, that's just one, one element of it.
We'd be using Cherie anyway.
A part of it is getting, is it delegate Jay Walker who keeps killing it down to UMS to see that it benefits UMS? Because it's my understanding, he feels it is a rich person's tax break is what we're asking for and it's a jobs bill. I, I can't explain how the delegates have, have pursued these bills previously. It was automatically prefilled, uh, by the same delegate with no, to our knowledge, no different strategy proposed. Um, but, yeah.
Weston, I would just like to see some outcomes. See what he's working on and how far he's gotten within the three months, just so we can see if this is an effective approach or not.
Now, I, I think a discussion's gonna have to be held with Eastern Shore delegation as to why you feel it's necessary to bring a lobbyist in without informing anybody of this and have him working on issues that I'm sure they feel that they can handle as well quite competently. So you probably want to have a discussion with the Eastern Shore delegation as to what, you know, what you think their role is.
So, um, at the meeting, he stood up and like everyone said, it was a surprise. He said he was working for us, the county council and the county executive. We didn't know that. I said, how long? He said, a couple of months. It sat down. I asked how much? He didn't answer. But you said May or June, so three months? What has he done for $7,500?
Like I mentioned, the various projects he's, he's, he's working on.
$7,500?
I, I mean, I mean, a good example I would like to say in terms of not knowing who we've hired, um, who here knows who's doing the design for the public safety building?
We don't because nobody's told us.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, can you?
Has he not told us that?
He could. Um, but, but the, 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 the point is, the, the point is, you know, we have full-time priorities and full-time projects we are working on, full-time activities. And, you know, the communication between the two branches has not been good.
Why would we need a lobbyist to tell us who designed the building?
No, I'm just saying, you, you don't know who else we've hired on a variety of topics.
Well, this county's been in existence for 152 years and we've never had a lobbyist.
We've never had a policy or procedure for a council either, so.
Is Weston Young, Wayne Strasberg and Bob Culver. You three are the biggest lobbyists.
And we're running the county. We don't, we, we're not able to go to Annapolis and, and we can ask Ocean City why, why they don't trust in their lower shore delegation like is being implied.
Bet you they wouldn't say that.
No, but we're not saying that. We're not saying that. We're, we're saying we have a bill that keeps getting killed, one, and that's one project. Again, it is contacting these various entities and working behind the scenes saying Wycomico County needs, needs more resources.
They're no Barryano. They don't have a big tent down at Tallis, so I can't see them getting the.
We, we don't always need to go with the flashy options and we'd probably pay over twice the amount we're paying to go with, um, you know, the, the biggest tenant Tallis.
Weston.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ell- uh, Mr. Ellington, and I want to make it really clear, this is, I'm not putting Mr. Ellington down. He's, you know, he's a businessman doing his, hopefully doing his job. He said he was working for us. Uh, he's been there since June. We've received no reports of anything he's done. I think we should request to get at least a weekly or a bi-weekly report of, of, of his activities.
He works under the executive's office. I mean, it, it comes underneath the executive office. We'll be glad to give you a report. Uh, I know Weston's just told you he will.
We'll figure out the best frequency for that, but it, but we'd be glad to tell you what's, what he's, what he's working on for the executive branch.
The money for the seven and a half.
Can I make a suggestion? That you also might want to include the, the Eastern Shore delegation and what he's working on? Because it seems like to me, in order, eh, no matter how great of job he's done or is doing, it's still gonna have to go through one of these delegates to introduce this stuff.
Exactly, and he is, he is meeting with them and he is working with them.
How could, how, how have you been meeting with them? He's, he's been here two months and they didn't even know he existed.
Uh, some of them did, because he's been working with them.
Well, some isn't very good. I mean, it's, I don't see how some could be, could be considered.
Which ones knew he existed?
If you speak with Senator Carosa, she'll tell you she's.
He run our campaign for.
He knows her.
He's our campaign manager. Of course she knows. And, and, uh, the only other thing I would address is that I, you know, two or three times, uh, Mr. Young, you have referenced the fact that, that the communication. This council sits here two, two times a, a month, every single month of the year. Anything is wide open for the executive branch to sit here and discuss it. We are held to discussions in the public. We don't, we're not, we cannot hold discussions behind closed doors. But to say that there's a lack of communication and to sort of, and to try to infer that it's the, the fault of this council, we are here.
I wasn't implying that.
I think you were. We were, we're here, two, two, we're here every other week for any discussions you want to have. So I can't see why you can, could possibly suggest the lack of communication might be because this, there's no effort on this side of the table.
Well, maybe we could get up during the five minutes of comment time and tell you what's going on in the county, John, if that, that helps.
You can schedule, you can schedule an open work session, Bob, every single meeting if you want.
Oh, we've asked for open work sessions. We've asked for so much. We have a stack of things we've asked to send over here for work.
Mrs. Hurley, have we ever turned down an open work session from the executive branch? Never. No, thank you. The only thing we've turned down, Bob, is when we asked for an open work session, you demanded that you would only do, you would only discuss it enclosed. And I informed you it would be illegal to do it in a closed session.
And personnel does not come under open work session, John.
I, I don't know what you're referencing.
You've got one coming up right after this and I've suggested that we come up with about the legal issues. We won't be here for that because basically you've not received a letter, you have received a letter from Mr. Nick Rice. We've talked to the state procurement. We need to talk about that in open work session if you want to before we.
Well, we're meeting after this.
No, we're not meeting after this.
Well, we are meeting after this.
Well, you do what you want to because you haven't, you have not answered. We've talked to.
Trying to open line of communication.
That's not how you.
Excuse me, uh, this, this is, this is too, this is not, this is not productive. This is not productive. This is arguing.
No, I, I, I think it's very, I don't want, I don't want the public to get the perception that based on what Mr. Young's statement was, that there's something that this council's refusing to meet with the executive branch, because that's not true.
Yeah, you know what? I, I do have to agree with this actually. If, if, if nothing else, can we just move on to the next section?
That's fine. I'm okay with that. I don't think you've answered our questions. We would like to know where the $30,000 came from, how that happened to be. Uh, Mr. Holloway made a very good point that we're committed to $30,000. What happens in two or three months if this guy turns out? What if this guy goes to jail in three months? What happens then?
I don't think I'll send it to pay.
We'd like, we'd like to.
Like the guy in the big town.
You don't think he'd do that?
I won't be paying him in jail.
You've already paid him.
Well, I'll be getting the money back. Don't have to worry about that.
You can't get the money back. How you can get the money? Well.
Well, it's the same with the maintenance of effort, you know, and here, and here we are with the Lewis Parks Sports and State.
I wouldn't know. We got a contract.
I know, I know we're supposed to be moving on, but I find it, I find it real hard. How did you come up with the $30,000 to pay him?
Well, it started off higher. We actually beat him down in price, you know, just like Weston said.
So, is the $30,000 what you had left over in the budget?
It was from different parts of our budget, yes.
So you had $30,000 left over.
That would normally go carry forward. That would normally go carry forward.
So, you paid him what we had?
No, we still, we still put money back into the budget for this year, this year now.
I'll have to confirm, but I think some of it was when we had the tax ditch, um, work, the mapping work, that they had some leftover funds. And, um, I believe.
I don't think someone would know where $30,000 came from.
Well, I just don't have it in front of me. I like, we can find it out. Yeah.
Present you can.
I think if any of us spent $30,000, we'd know where it came from. Yes, Josh?
In closing, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I spent a couple of years working at the legislature. I know, um, you know, I know what it takes to get a lot of this, this passed and get a lot of these through. I've worked on numerous bond bills. And, um, the, looks like the difference here, if we're trying to go between executive branch lobbying and legislative branch lobbying, two different key avenues. Especially if we're, you know, for funds from the governor's budget, his personal budget, or, you know, if we're going through money for the, for other supplemental budgets. There's lots of things that we can do in order to get further funds for state. I just want to say as a, I didn't know. Um, I've known we've often had a lack of communication to other branches. That's from here on out going to change. But I personally want to be able to do all that I can. I, I know a lot of how we can move this forward. I know a lot of the key players and spent over a decade now, work, you know, two years working directly at the legislature and over a decade now, working with, uh, the legislative process in order to get a lot of these bills passed. I, I want to be able to help move these forward because these are far too important for us to, um, to, to, to allow to fail again. The airport maintenance tax bill, you know, there's, we got a lot of conversations about these in groups like the Rural Maryland Council or other groups. That, you know, we, we can get those groups to help push this along, uh, even if our delegation, uh, isn't as effective as we would like them to be. But regardless, I personally want to make sure that, um, I want to be involved and I want to be able, helpful because these issues are far too important. And I, I appreciate at least that we're trying to move these, uh, move these forward and not let them fail again.
And we appreciate your willingness to work with us on this. It's not just the, the maintenance bill. There's so much more with the airport. You know, there's hangar money, there's extension of runway, the MAA, that, that he does know the people better than we do. And that's why we're, we're, you know, trying to get somebody to get in there to help us open the doors so that we can get more funding. And we've got so much we can do out there, you know, part of the grant money, we're trying to look on more, more money for the water going out there. So if we can get part of that, more of it paid for, that's further ahead Wycomico County becomes.
Bob, I heard this same argument about airport manager, but she would be able to do all this when you were, you know, we were.
She is applying to FAA. She's doing all that. She is doing.
It takes a team effort without a doubt to get these through state and legislative and through all the hurdles. I think it's gonna take a team effort from here on, you know, going forward and, and I think we all need to be focused on that.
Everybody agrees with what's needed. I think it's somewhat the process that sometimes is in question. Um, next item on the agenda, we have legal services for Wycomico County.
Thank you, Bob.
And again, as I said, until we get Nick up here to tell you what we've done as far as procurement and he talked to the state procurement officer, I think you all need to know what, what his feelings are on that. We did what you all wanted to do as far as putting out an RFP. We got the bids. Mr. Wilber's firm won the bid hands down.
We didn't say we wanted an RFP. We wanted you to advertise for it. Is an RFP required for a, for legal counsel? No, an RFP's not required for legal counsel. That's probably why Mr. Rice's, uh, letter, we didn't respond because it's not required. We just simply wanted you to advertise.
Well, we got it out there as much as we could. You know, per, per your request, we did that. So my point is, is that now we've got to go ahead and, and follow the procurement calls that we did do. So I want him to come up here and answer that. He's the one that has all the, all the qualifications in procurement.
Well, we read what he had and the bottom line was that.
There were some questions on his letter that needs to be done, so.
The law firm that was being recommended, the law firm that's being recommended was the same law firm that the council had fired. And it's highly irregular for us to turn around and, and make an agreement that we're going to agree to hire the same legal counsel that we just fired a week before.
Well, without good calls, and we've, nobody's given us any calls, not.
Don't need good calls. Charter doesn't require good calls. Law, state law does not require good calls.
That's what you say. I say different.
That's what the law says. It's my definition.
There, there are definitions within personnel manuals and that type of thing that you've got to go by as far as, uh, that. So, um, there's nothing for us to discuss tonight from our side of view. We appreciate your time and, and look forward to working with you on the other items.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda? I have on the agenda legal services for Wycomico County. As you can see, the, we're not going to get a discussion on, uh, legal services for Wycomico County. I'd like to remind, uh, the executive that we do have limited time on this process before the 90 days expires. And Mr. Wilber, since you are in the audience, you do recognize, of course, that. Could you give us a second? Would you mind? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The reason that we scheduled the work session, uh, was no different than the letter that was issued, was it a week ago? About a week or two ago? Uh, council's very concerned with the fact that, and it's, I apologize for addressing this with you, but of course, the executive branch won't, won't review this with us. Uh, we feel there's a very huge concern with the fact that we're only about 30 days out from the 90 days extension that was initially established. Um, we don't want to fall back into the same set of circumstances that we had two months ago, where the executive branch was up in arms and extremely concerned about the fact that they were not able to finish their legal, um, obligations with a limited amount of time. So 90 days has been extended. The 90 days is 30 days away. And we're just trying to emphasize the fact that, uh, we're looking for some resolution to that. Because after 90 days, your firm, as I understand it, would not qualify to continue after that period of time. Is that be correct?
As far as the appointment process, I think that needs to be addressed.
If you could close some mic things.
I think that needs to be addressed with the executive. That's beyond my scope.
I understand.
And as far as.
Was there any question about the charter?
And as far as interpretations about the charter that affect my contract, I think both the council and the executive should seek their own counsel on that.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Wilber. Um, my, my concern is, is that, you know, once the 90 days expires, your firm, I think, um, understanding the law and recognizing that, uh, my, my concern would be if, um, and I, I think I could speak just for the circumstances that have developed, unless the county were to grant some extension, I, I think it would be compromising the integrity of your firm if you were to continue on past that 90 days. And I just say that very objectively, not understanding the law, but as I, as I interpreted, as I can interpret the difference between right and wrong, the intent of the charter.
I hear you.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilber.
Just, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Bill.
No, I was just thinking, Mr. Wilber.
So, someone else in your firm, if they were to be appointed to replace you, is that a conflict? As I know with, with physicians being a larger group, there is less liability insurance. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilber. You want to take it with you?
Yeah, it looks like it.
The next item we have on the agenda is the process of filling a vacancy on the Board of Education. We had the fortune to hear from Mrs. Smith as, as well as President Ashanti on this. So, the, the topic is open for discussion on council, for council today.
Well, basically, what we heard from Ben was we couldn't get people to show up.
Right.
So, that's why we addressed it. I don't know that we addressed it as doing away with it particularly. I mean, that was discussed in moving it to the council. What was Ben's position on doing away with the committee? I, I can't really remember. I had to, I had to leave early that day.
Yeah, he just kind of arbitrarily said maybe, maybe less people.
Less people.
But, but, you know, addressing that a little bit, we had a situation where, you know, they were supposed to recommend to us two people and there was only two people applied. So, as a result of that, I mean, in some ways, it's probably a little unfair to even judge the, you know, this process this time because what motivation is there to the commission? You know, when they meet when they're not having to decide between people? You know, if they have four candidates, now that's a different story because they had to narrow it down to two.
They could come to the meetings.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not disagreeing there. I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent. My point is, the motivation factor was obviously quite limited, you know, we wanted, you know, the importance of, you know, anyone, when you volunteer for, or appointed, or you're appointed to a position, you should certainly take that seriously and you should show up.
I tell you, I think the next, next time we could say if they didn't show up, they would get appointed to the board of Ed. Then they might show up.
But like I said, but like I said, but the whole, you know, the process, like I said, or just, you know, the, the, their job to narrow down the candidates and so forth was unfortunately kind of muted by the fact that there was only two candidates.
Good point.
And I'm saying all that from the standpoint of, we discussed this the last time and, you know, I'm all about simpler is typically better, you know, maybe less people in the commission, those kind of things. But I do have concerns about, we start making changes, when you change things like that, you know, there's unforeseen consequences that result. And a lot of thought went into that, creating that commission back in two thousand sixteen and creating the representation that's on it. And, yeah, so that is a concern when we, if we start trying to change that, the significance of having people from the business community, the significance from having people, you know, represented that have childrens with disabilities, you know, and so forth, and the district, on and on, you know, it's a very varied commission. I'm just concerned, just because we've had this one experience with it, does that justify us now going to the state and trying to make some significant changes when, you know, like I say, there could be circumstances that are just very unintended that could result from that. So, I don't know, you know, in hindsight, looking back at our last work session and going through the material again, listening to the comments, personally, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to, yeah, I'm not so sure we want to change this at this point, you know, because it really, because the reality is, it wasn't necessarily tested this time, you know, due to the fact we only had two candidates, you know.
Yeah, I, I feel this, I feel the same way, that you said it really hasn't been tested and, and I hope and pray that nobody else passes away and we have to form that commission. But it, we got a lot of bugs to work out and I, I think there is a diverse community that is involved in this commission. There's a lot of people and getting them all together, that is an issue itself, but I'm not sure, we do need more discussion on this. It's a bit irregular, but Mrs. Smith or President Ashanti, if you'd like to make any comments, if you'd like to come forward, and I don't want to put either of you on the spot and you don't have to say anything at all, but it is a work session and you're here.
There are, there are two positions that I saw.
Were you all on the committee?
I was, yes.
Were you?
The NAACP was supposed to have a spot on the, on the committee. I think communication was poor and whatever, and so it's easy to just say you can, you have a commission and you, you get some names together and whatever, but whoever is the president or chair of the committee has to, has to be able to, must have leadership skills. I'll put it that way.
Counsel, what happened?
I just, the, the two things that really stuck out to me when I was reviewing the, the positions on the, on the board were representation of minorities and the, the special education, child with a disability and special education needed to be affiliated with a nonprofit. And so, that's very conflicting on monetary sides. I would just like to see that wording changed. And I don't know if there's a different means of communication that would, that would be more conducive to everyone. I mean, I'm big on Zoom meetings and not everyone can sit down at the table and have discussions. Sometimes you have to figure out what are the needs of that commission, that committee.
Yeah, and it's a good point and, and what Councilman McCain said was a very valid point as well. I also felt that there were, I got the impression that there were problems as far as budgeting is concerned because you did not have a, a budget, or did we end up putting that responsibility on the Board of Education?
Yes.
Board of Education.
It would have been.
Except that, okay, good. Now, what was the issue with the public hearings? Did you find that somewhat onerous, whereas, and I understood too, that the, the time allowed for advertising and the public hearings, et cetera, it created such an extended period of time where you had to give public notice that it almost got us beyond the deadline. Am I, am I correct?
In part. The, as far as advertising, putting out the press releases, we did not have a budget. I'm not so convinced that we needed to have a budget.
Okay.
I trust that there's enough community interest and involvement that we could put out the press releases and, as I said, WMDT covered it and WBOC covered it. I saw the strip go across the bottom. A colleague said, hey, Smith, I saw you on TV and heard about replacing the school board member who passed. So, I know that the message was out there. I don't know how well it was heard, of course, but it was put out.
You, I think some of the, some of the concerns that, and I'll just speak for this county. You can't expect the minority community to get all this information from those two TV stations. You've got to be willing to put it on other stations. There is WDIH, there's, the Haitian community have, have that and, and if it's, if it's for the public, it's free. But someone has to be willing to see that, I mean, to do that. Not everyone look at those stations with having direct TV and dish and all that. Not everyone looking at those, those stations.
That's a good point.
You know, so you have to have other ways, you know, and, and there's PAC fourteen, there's, you know, we've got to do better in including people and making sure that people know information.
With regard to the Haitian community, I had reached out to Mr. Lee, who actually brought a member of the Haitian community to one of the public meetings.
Yeah, he, he, he's a, he's a mover. He gets stuck down.
He does. And one thing that I, I would have liked to have had is the names and addresses and emails of all of our members. I know that some of our members' emails changed during the course of time, from the time we were first named up until now, and the same is true of telephone numbers and address maybe wouldn't have changed quite as easy, but getting up with members was difficult.
You know, as you all are talking, I'm realizing that we never, I don't think, I'm assuming that the commission probably never had a post-appointment revisit to evaluate how you succeed, how, what your successes were and what your failures were.
You're correct.
So, maybe that's something that, you know, as far as, I, I don't know if we can help with that through work sessions with the council. It's a large commission, but could you, do you think that would be possible, that commission to try to get together, get a really good sense of whether or not you really have fourteen or whether you only have six, somehow to define where you're going if this were to happen next week?
I'd be happy to, to do that and I've always offered the WCEA office on Old Ocean City Road as a place that we can hold that meeting. That was another issue for some of the hearings, the concern about finding a place to hold them. You were gracious enough to lend this venue for that purpose, the second go around. I, I'd also like to say that the first time that we met to nominate members for the positions, Mr. Willie's position, Mr. Hollinger's position, and there was one other who escapes me right now, there was no problem in, in having candidates for those positions. And I don't know if that was because it was just a certain district that only produced two candidates, where before, it was before the election took place, and so there were plenty of people who wanted to.
Well, that's all, that was resulted in appointed school boards versus elected school boards, to be frank.
And there was really no process for the importance.
But the previous ones were appointments and we've always, we've always had good response when we were trying to fill appointed.
But once the law took effect and there were two retirees and one who, or, or two appointments that ran out, terms ran out, and one retired, the law had taken effect and we were convened in order to fill those three seats.
How do we go forward?
Well, I was just going to make a suggestion regarding that. The concerns that Mrs. Ashanti expressed, the concerns, Ms. Smith, you've expressed, all of those are things that can be dealt with outside of changing the state law.
Right.
To do, you know, I mean, the better communication, you know, having the phone numbers, et cetera, you know, having them meet, doing a root cause analysis at the end of this. I mean, all, they're all things that can definitely improve this process, but we don't have to change state law to do any of those.
Correct.
So, you know, just what I'm hearing, I know a lot of discussions we've had and so forth, yeah, I think a lot of that can be addressed and improved upon. Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned us trying to change state law, you know, which is a pretty big deal, where I'm not so sure it's the, the actual law is the, is our problem we're facing right now, it's just, you know, the communication, et cetera. And like I said, it wasn't, this wasn't the greatest test for us to make a decision on this, this time, you know, just because of the situation with just two candidates, you know, so.
It opened our eyes, though.
Yeah, right, 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 right. So, I think it's a great thing. We got it on our radar. We're very sensitive to this, you know, and if we, if we end up going down this road again in the near future and the results and, you know, we get to test it again and then we're like, oh, you know what, this happened twice now or something, yes, then maybe, yeah, it's serious enough, we need to address this from a state law perspective. But I think, I think at the moment, we can address a lot of this and make it much better, but not without going down the path of actually trying to change the state law.
Did I hear Mr. Bromley correct when he said there was no longer a Waikamaka County PTA or council PTAs?
I heard him say that.
So, if that's the case, how do we fix that? Because you, you mentioned that as one of the fourteen representatives. So, if there's no longer that PTA, then we need to adjust that.
The county schools still have PTAs. I'll be attending Waikamaka Middle Schools PTA Monday.
So, maybe pick somebody from one of the PTAs.
Put that in the hands of the parents.
What the, what the code says is that there'll be one member from the Waikamaka County Council of PTAs. Right, but there's no longer according to Mr. Bromley. I think though, to adhere to the state law, you, you can't do it. I mean, you should either change it or. So, we will have to change that. It seemed to me that would be logical if it doesn't exist, yes.
Or they might want to just reconvene the, once again, I think, and these, if you do reconvene, it's pretty important to have the Waikamaka County Council of PTAs. It kind of gets back to Mrs. Ashanti's statement about leadership, you know, we need someone to take that leadership role and get that reconvened because that's a pretty.
I thought they were effective.
Yeah, that's the umbrella of all our PTAs, so that's pretty important.
Did you have Connaught, Jack?
I would just say, just, I don't have any particularly strong feelings on it, but I do think fourteen members is rather unwieldy and it would be better if it were, you know, maybe limited to seven or even nine individuals. And if we have to go that route to make changes.
What's that based on? Why is seven better to fourteen? Why is nine better to fourteen? Why, I mean.
Well, sometimes you say, if you have, yeah, yeah, no, I think sometimes you say if you have fewer members, an individual feels more responsibility.
Back in two thousand sixteen, I mean, you know, numerous meetings were held to address those were the needs to make sure these people were represented in our public. That's one thing we've heard from our public on this. They want to make sure that the public has representation and that's why those different categories were all included in that commission.
Yeah, like I said, I don't have a strong feelings on it, but I do think, you know, that it's sometimes people feel more responsibility if there's few, if they know that there's only a couple of people showing they're a part of this board or a particular committee or commission or whatever it is, they'll, more people, individuals will show up and want to be more engaged, they want to be more involved and then, and reach out to the public as opposed to just being, oh, I'm a name on a list, I'm not going to tell anybody this is happening. They'll find out on their own, you know.
Could I offer?
I think that, well, many commissions or committees or whatever have certain guidelines or something in place as to what a quorum is. And so, I don't have a problem with there being fourteen, but there should be a quorum as to, so that you know that you can go ahead on and do business if you have that quorum. And other thing is, and, and as I mentioned before, that for any commission or committee to work, there has to be some type of team development or whatever. You just can't say, okay, here's a problem, we'll come together today and resolve this problem and we've never met before. We've never sat down and talked about, about our mission and that type of thing. And I, I don't, you know, I just don't feel like that was done.
It sounds to me like the commission should meet more often.
Yes.
Can, can it be passed, Bob, that they would not have to have a quorum, not have to have a majority quorum? Is that what you're basing it on, a majority quorum, fourteen people, you had to have eight? Is that what it was?
I, I don't know whether it could or couldn't, but I mean, in terms of practicality and common sense, it would be, I think, a little unusual to, to not have a quorum requirement. But if I could offer just one further thought on what Mr. Hastings said about reducing the size, one of the provisions is there'll be one member from each of the eight incorporated municipalities. If that were eliminated, that would cut it down to six. And of course, it could be added up. You could put some other persons in there too, if you wanted to have it more than six, but it just seems very unusual. And I know looking at the other counties that have commissions, I didn't see anything like that.
Especially if it's not their district.
That's actually right. I, you know, and I agree with you there, Mr. Taylor, the, I mean, if there's one weakness in the appointment thing, I saw that as a weakness. In fact, and for example, we could, one thing we could replace it with is that Dr. Basart had recommended this, you know, we should have a student representative.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, we can certainly improve it with, you know, just, just having eight people from the eight.
Yeah, I guess the county Board of Education would have to, somebody would have to select the student, presumably the board.
Right, right. They can address that, but, I mean, they have a student representative on the Board of Education. I mean, the student representative on the Board of Education could be the student representative.
Yeah, could be that person.
On the commission.
Did I hear that there was also, I couldn't remember if I heard that correctly, that there was also a question of whether or not the minutes were correctly kept?
There are.
A public. A public. a public body like this needs to take it.
And there are bylaws.
Yeah, so that, I think, I'm not sure who the governing body, or who the, I'm assuming is that, is that the Board of Education, or is that a council?
See, that's, that's, that's the issue, is that there is no governing, governing body, and there's no governing body on purpose, because.
They were, I'm sorry, there were a lot of funds for administrative support of this.
The Board of Education did do that, and, but that was, there were no strings attached, which is unusual, but that was on purpose, because both parties were trying not to show any undue influence on the commission whatsoever. I would attend the public meetings, but I would not go to the commission meetings. So, whereas you may have been looking for help, there really wasn't anybody out there to give you help, because we were both trying to stay away from that process, but now.
Administrative support is just taking notes, doing bylaws.
Right.
I mean, you had, you had principles that were on that, I mean, that's, there's no excuse for that. That needs to be appointed to somebody else. I mean, to let that completely go through the cracks is unacceptable, and someone else needs.
I agree with you. To not, so I guess I'm.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, being.
So, I guess, I guess the onus may be on, on your group to try to get together, maybe evaluate. Again, as I'd said before, as I said, Council McCain made some very good points as far as what we keep and what we don't. The less we have to go to the state for anything, the better. But I, I was concerned, and maybe in error, about the requirements on the advertising, and the requirements on the public hearings, that really caused a lot of tension on meeting your deadlines, and if those need to be adjusted in any way, and you think that we need to make those adjustments, we would want to know. So, could we leave that? I don't know how we would leave it, because, I mean, we would, we would have to inform Mr. Bromley, and we should supply him with a coffee of these minutes, so that he's aware of the discussion. And I don't know how your organization now, unless it is with Mr. Bromley, would schedule a meeting. Would that be the proper process?
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I would think we need, we would need to appoint someone to provide administrative support for anything that you're doing.
I think we need to appoint someone to provide administrative support moving forward, because otherwise, you're going to have the same issue of no meeting minutes, no bylaws, no.
I will say, with regard to meeting minutes, Ms. Gosnell was our secretary, and she did record the meetings. Now, I don't know that those recordings were transcribed into print, but she did record the meetings.
I thought they were transcribed. I'm not 100% sure, but I thought they were.
I don't have my hands on that.
And she was, and she was someone who was appointed, so she was not really acting as an administrative support.
She was a member of the commission who was also taking on that responsibility.
As a Pittsville representative.
I'm not quite sure what her title was, but she, she took on the responsibility of taking the minutes, as a commission member.
Yes, but there's administrative support given to them, so it has to.
What do you mean? What's the definition of administrative support? Are you talking about financially, or what?
Well, it's administrative support, like what Laura does, and Lindell.
Like the Board of Education secretary.
Yes, like the Board of Education, yeah, so anything official that needs to be filed.
Yes, someone to, to make sure that communication's going out, that people are, are one person that, that's sending out communications, and housing the minutes, and making sure that they, because if you said that there are some minutes coming forward, when you got the report, did you get anything in writing? Did this county council get anything in writing from that commission?
I requested, and didn't get anything.
It depends. I don't think at the time we did.
Did we get any from that, from this commission room? I don't remember, Ms. Hurley.
We have not. I've called Chris Gosnell a couple times, and she's not returned any of my phone calls.
So, that's, you know, to have a commission that, that's come out of a law, there needs to be more accountability. Like Councilwoman is saying, there needs to be at least an administrative person helping out. And if the Board of Education has allotted some money, that could be taken care of, I guess, within that, that money or whatever, and whatever, but there has to be more accountability.
My point is that it's not happening, so let's not keep going to them if it's not going to happen. Let's find some, someone else who's going to.
I think it's written in the state law, Mr. Taylor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is actually written into the law.
Yeah, what it.
That they're supposed to provide them.
Yeah, what it says is, the Wycomico County Public School System shall provide staff for the commission.
Okay.
Okay, so there we go.
I mean, I guess that could be tweaked, and they could also be the custodian of the records, and, you know.
Apparently, they didn't do that.
Well, that staff person can take, take care of the minutes. They can take care of sending communications out, and whatever. So, if it's in the law, it needs to be enforced.
Good.
I do share with you, especially this last go around, snippets of the websites where you could go to see the press releases that were now copies of the press releases, so you could get some of our.
Right.
And they were, their public notices were published on the county's website. She did email them to me, and we got them published.
Good.
Just one thought, Mr. Ken?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this meeting, of course, tonight is a follow-on from our meeting last time.
Right.
Where we did make some decisions for some other changes in the state ordinance. For example, that the vacancy would be filled for the remainder, complete remainder of the term, some other things that, at some point, it's not imminent to get it to Annapolis, but of course, it will become imminent at some point. And I guess this, this is pretty open-ended tonight, so the only thing I'm suggesting is, just remember, it's going to become imminent at some point.
Yeah, keep, yeah, that's a good, we want to keep that in mind, that there are some things that do have to go to Annapolis in order to make, to tweak this. But we'll leave it up to you to, I guess, talk to Mr. Bromley to try to get the commission back together, somehow or other define which commission members no longer choose to be on the commission? If there's more that are needed, then we'll have to address that.
And may we also have a copy of the papers you're talking about, the legislation?
Sure, yeah, I think maybe we can get one tonight, probably from.
Could you send that out?
Yeah.
Sure. Are you talking about the school board nominating committee?
Yes.
The state, the state law.
The state law.
Oh, sure.
I have the state law, but he was saying the changes that you're making, or suggested.
Oh, the changes that we're proposing.
Yes.
I can also forward you the deputy director of school accountability.
Well, that would be, that would be the minute to the last meeting.
Okay.
That would cover the changes.
From the last meeting, I understand, yeah.
Perhaps we can send the memo that you drafted on the suggested changes.
Would that be okay too, Bob?
Sure, yeah.
We'll send you the memo that Bob drafted, as well as the copy of the minutes from the last meeting, and the copies from this meeting, you know, it'd be redundant for you all, all the commission members.
Okay.
So, if you choose to meet soon, I would suggest reaching out to the board to get a staff member to meet with you, to take the notes, just transcribe, or whatever assistance's needed.
And I think what we'll do, it's a good point, Larry. Laura, if you could contact Wycomico County Board of Education, let them know about the discussion, and that they would probably be hearing from the commission on, on staff.
Okay.
Okay, on a request for staff.
Is it possible to get a list of active members?
And who, who suggested them for appointing?
Yeah, that would be great.
And that way, we can circle back and find out if we can find those appointed, go through the people who suggested them for appointing.
In case we have to replace them.
If there's no, if there's no issue out there of appointing anybody, do you have any active members? I mean.
Ms. Smith, then.
Well, I realize, you know, I'm talking about the 14-member committee. Are they inactive now, or have they been dismissed?
No, no, they're still there. No, it's ongoing.
We're there for four years.
Oh, okay. I thought they were just convened, I thought they were just convened for the, for the action. No, okay, that's fine. I didn't understand that. That's fine.
That's true. We came together for the action, but there was.
But they still, they're still serving?
Yes.
All right, okay.
But in the meantime.
I need to meet regularly.
I do have a copy.
Any other questions? Listen, we're glad you both came tonight, sir, because it made a much more productive meeting for us. So, thank you.
We've got some more issues, if you want to keep working.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another hour, shouldn't we?
Thank you, Mary.
We do need to find out about the Council of PTAs, if that was in the state law.
Yeah.
Make a motion with adjournment.
Sit here.
It's not even eight, oh, it is eight.
Yeah.
Actually, motion to adjourn.
We're already, we're already.
Second.
Thank you, I will.
Please adjourn. All right, thank you.